Just banged the gavel.
Meeting called, meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, October 17th, Town Council. Meeting is Town Council at 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Public comment?
So this is a new forum for the Town Council meeting, so here it is, public comment. If you have a comment, you can stand, come on up, one person at a time, state your name and address for the record, and we'll take under advisement. Rep. Serpa?
Question on this, well with this being a new change, if we have a public comment, we're addressing this here as well at the end?
No, we could, we have, we have ward reports.
Yeah, tonight we have ward reports.
If you have a public comment that you want to share, yes, you could address this now.
But also, Dave, I was warned that if we answer public comment, that we're in violation because we're not talking on topic.
No, that's why it says, is we under advisement, then we can talk on topic, and then we can take, like I said last time.
Yeah, I understand that.
It gives us time to digest what we say. Rep. Serpa?
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me be the first to comment during your first public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And Mr. Zimlinsky, I want to welcome you to the town of West Warwick. I certainly hope you enjoy your stay here. You have a great council to work with, and we look forward to working with you as well. And excuse my frocky voice, I'm still recuperating. I'm here asking you to take something under advisement that has to do with Ward Five, though when I spoke to you, John, to alert you that I was coming tonight, I know Ward Five and Ward Four kind of cut off at New London Turnpike and Turner Drive. Mr. Richards, Mr. Roger Richards, who lives in the very corner house of Turner and New London Turnpike, pays flood insurance. A number of people on Turner Drive do pay flood insurance in varying...
Mr. Richards is not on Turner Drive.
Roger Richards?
No.
He had the corner house.
He's on Crossbow, pretty sure.
That's the son. That's his son. This is Roger Richards Senior, yes.
I was gonna say, I talk to Roger almost every day, so...
Yeah, he has the corner house at New London Turnpike and Turner Drive. So he was telling me that he and a number of neighbors on Turner Drive pays flood insurance. Not everyone, it seemed, the flood insurance seems to be paying, being paid inconsistently and in varying amounts. And it's not the first time that he mentioned this to me. So I was talking to Senator Raptakis just last night at a Coventry Sewer meeting. House was much shorter, thank God. That was only four hours. And I mentioned it to Senator Raptakis, and he said that he had a similar problem on Johnson's Pond a number of years ago. The residents there were complaining. And he said, what it requires is for the Town Council and/or the Town Manager to make a formal request of Congressman Landman to get FEMA to come down and reassess that body of water, I guess it's called Flat Top Pond, reassess that body of water and the houses around it to determine whether or not they really are in a flood zone. Senator Raptakis said that that was accomplished on Johnson's Pond. Some of those homes were taken completely out of the flood zone. The people no longer play, pay flood insurance. Some people had their flood insurance reduced, and some people actually got the flood insurance money that they had paid back. So all I'm asking you tonight is to please take this request under advisement. If one of you or all of you, some of you, would request Congressman Landman to get FEMA involved to evaluate that area, I know the residents on Turner Drive and in that area would appreciate it. And if you have any questions?
Ernie, I'd like to see that letter drafted, again, you know, asking the congressman to take a look at the area and do a reassessment.
Thank you, Rep. Serpa.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
John, you have most of, five, three houses on Turner.
Yeah, I mean, it serves the whole community, so...
We'll take a look at it. Any other public comment? Just state your name and address for the record.
Jill Batterisby, 66 Winthrop Ave. I'd like to know on what's going on at the end of the street, where they have that empty building. It's, it was a, I think that, like a trucker, eighteen-wheeler trucker place.
At the end of Winthrop, on the corner, on the corner of West Warwick Ave or in the back?
No, in the back, where it's all gated. Because the last, like this whole week, I think they've had the fire trucks down there for...
It's an empty building at the end of Winthrop?
Yeah, yeah.
Chief, have they been training down there or anything?
No, I'd be saying that it's just from the water, something to do with the pressure.
Okay.
But it's continuous, it's like, nonstop.
Wait, it's a fire truck that's out there?
No, the, the whole station is down there, like three o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, seven in the morning. But I just want to know if they're gonna be eventually putting something in there, or if it's just gonna stay empty.
We'll get back to you on that, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none?
Town manager's report?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really quick, it's not really a ward report, so, but a really quick update. I'd mentioned that we're going to have a Halloween party on October 28th. So just an update, there are letters outside on the table along with a flyer. Flyers have been delivered to half the schools, the other half will go out tomorrow. But I'm also putting a twist to it. We're doing a trick-or-treat trail. And the Civic Center is huge. I'm asking, I'm not asking for money. I'm asking for West Warwick business owners, if they'd like to participate, to donate their time. And what this means basically is, the event will begin indoors, children will come in costumes, travel through the trick-or-treat trail before participating in a few contests. We will end the night outdoors with a flashlight egg hunt, complete with special prizes. This will be a free event. I'm asking that people bring a canned good when entering the building. This will go towards baskets along with turkeys and hams that I'll be providing for families in need during the holiday season. Essentially, what's going to happen is there'll be two parties. The first will take place from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. for ages zero to five, and the next will take place from 6:30 to 8:30 from ages six to 10. In total, I would plan for about 300 excited children. So the business part of it, I'd love for your business to be part of this first annual fall community event. Your role, your role will be to make up the trick-or-treat trail. You'll be passing out candy, passing out items such as candy, pens, keychains, magnets, any, be creative. It's very similar to going door-to-door on Halloween night. It's an exciting way for your, for you to be part of the community and a creative way to advertise your business. So basically, what I'm looking for is, is businesses and nonprofits, email me if you'd like to take part, passing out, like I just said, candy, magnets, something. You'll see the kids in the costume. It's a quick event, but I, I'm really trying to tie, really bring the sense of community. And that's the business community. And Ernie, we're really rich. This is, West Warwick is a rich business community. And they're very giving, as far as sponsoring sports teams, sponsoring different events. And I hate to keep asking people for money. So this isn't, I'm not asking for any money, just time. So if you want to have a representative come, just send me an email, let me know. I'm hoping for 30 to 40 businesses, nonprofits. So that's it.
Thanks, Jay.
Just, just one thing, I want to comment to the councilman in Ward Five. I forgot to call you, John, just put a note, the retention pond up in your ward over there usually cleaned. Dave Lombardi was notified, but before freezes, where that water comes up, and like Patricia said, Pat Serpa said, the water's coming up, and just get on, Dave, I have customers that come down and they were reminding me, and I never had a chance to call you, so I just, I got text that just now.
Thank you. Town manager's report. Very short, I know.
Yes, this will be short, probably the shortest report. It has been a busy seven days. I've met with the department heads. We had a staff meeting, which was very good. And I started to meet with all the departments, starting with the major departments first, getting to understand the departments, how they operate, the staffing level, the issues within those departments. I envision the report to be current events, what's going on, important issues to bring to the council's attention and focus on, you know, the issues that are affecting us at that time. So what's, I can tell you is, it's been a fast seven days. Met with departments, and looking forward to that, meeting some people in the community, which is going to be an ongoing event, so I'm very happy to be here. There's a lot to learn. Every community is unique, every community's different. There's a lot to learn, I'm eager to learn. And I certainly will put the time and effort in to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. No finance report tonight, as you stated, you emailed to me today?
Uh, yes. The finance director has provided me with a format for future reports. We're going over that. So there's no report today. We'll be tweaking that report and providing a report in the future to the council.
Thank you.
Sewer use appeals abatement resolved that the following abatement is hereby granted per recommendation from the Sewer Use Appeals Board and presented by the Director of Administration of Wastewater Treatment Facility for approval by the Town Council. The original list is on file in the office of the Director of Administration of the Wastewater Treatment Facility, Mr. Christopher Mulvaney, 58, Robin Lane, Platte 29, Lot 264, abatement $426.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Minutes of previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the October 3rd, 2017 Town Council meeting are hereby accepted.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda, license applications resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moving second, discussion. I do have an email here from Rose Marie Silver, tax collector. We have one business on here, and I just want to confirm that it's here, which was Condenser Two Mexican Restaurant is applying for a liquor license. And the previous owner of that restaurant, which was Chang's Gourmet LLC, they owe $4,368 in tangible taxes. So personally, I don't think they should get their license until the taxes are paid, as we always say, they should be up to date on their taxes. So, sir, come on up if you have...
I have a thing to mount on Halloween.
You just have to come to the mic, state your name and address, and who you represent.
Steven Litwin, 116 Orange Street, Providence, Rhode Island. I represent the applicant, 721 Quaker Lane LLC. We are very aware of the tangible taxes. It's been passed on to the landlord, and he is aware that he's going to need to address that, either to pay that, then to go after the prior owner, and that those are going to need to be paid in full before we're allowed to open, so we are aware of those.
Okay, so no license until, unless taxes are paid?
Exactly.
That works for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question on one of the businesses. I don't know if it's a typo or my mistake or what. Stop and Go Gas at 929 Providence Street, if I'm not mistaken, it's Stop and Gas. They have a wrong name here. Mary Ann? Paula, where's Paula?
Oh, you just gotta look through the license application down bottom.
Yeah, look, I don't know what he wrote on it. Every time he uses this...
Hold on, Paula, he can't yell from the crowd.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
Well, he's down bottom here.
Where is it, Dave?
Hold on.
All the way down?
Stop and Go Gas, that's what he wrote.
It's Stop and Gas, but, I mean, I don't know what we're...
He's doing business as Stop and Go Gas, that's what he put, so we have to go by that.
All right, but, on all the, on all the signs that are, Stop and Gas.
Yeah, but you gotta look, sometimes they say, like, I could be, I can be Stop and Stop, doing business as...
No, I don't care about that, it's just that, I didn't want any technicality in on the license.
Oh, we're going by what he put.
Yeah, I got it right here.
I have no other questions with it.
All right.
Consent agenda...
Wait a minute, we haven't voted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda's correspondence resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moving second, if you look at the correspondence, the West Warwick High School Band is asking for a donation from the Town Council to go directly to the music students and will help to free the cost of a large-scale tour. What you want to do as a council on that. And KC cheerleading, first All-Star competitive cheerleading team, the KC Cats is competing in Disney in Florida. They are asking for West Warwick Town Council for a donation to help get them there also. So if you want, we can put that on the agenda next council meeting, if anybody feels they want to make a donation. I think normally, I don't know about the KC Cats, but the high school stuff and advertising and like that, we usually donate a hundred dollars from the Town Council. The KC Cats, that would probably be right out of our pocket, if anybody wants to donate. Did we donate before to KC Cats? So we'll have to look at that. I could put it on the next agenda.
Fine.
Town Council acting as liquor commission, Class B virtual liquor license resolved that the following application for a Class B virtual liquor license, having advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrance or objectives present, the same is hereby approved. 721 Quaker Lane LLC, DBA Condesa Two Mexican Restaurant, 717, 719 Quaker Lane, West Warwick, Rhode Island, 02893.
I'll move the resolution for discussion, a second.
And again, this is what we talked about earlier, no license without the tangibles being paid. So with that stipulation?
I'll move to table that license.
No, we're gonna keep, because it's advertised matter, and I was, that's what the solicitor just said about tableing it, and I said, because it's an advertised matter, I think if we just make sure we put the stipulation in there, that all taxes have to be paid.
I withdraw my request.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Town Council, acting as Town Council, ordinance number 2017-26, and ordinance amending zoning map of the Code of Ordinance of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance for discussion, second.
Moving seconded, Mark put this on the agenda. This is basically the same thing we went over for the land property for Dollar General. We, as a council, discussed that we would change the zoning of that area, just that small piece of land that's in the back, to allow Dollar General to build, and that just needs to be in ordinance format. Does, that's basically cut and dry, right, Mark?
That's correct, Council President. The, it was on for a zone change back in July. It received first passage, and it was not formatted in the proper format, so we're bringing it to you this evening for a second passage. It's a performer, just to vote tonight, granted second passage, and the project will be able to move ahead. We've got it tentatively scheduled for the November planning board meeting, so it's, it's pretty important that that get approved tonight.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, roll call vote, Jack?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Town Council meeting scheduled for 2018?
It's not a resol, move the resolution, second.
Moving second, as you can see, there's only one Town Council meeting for every month. That's the actual schedule of the Town Council meeting. The sewer committee meetings, the actual second meeting of the month. If you look, Paula and I, she already knew from previous years, she moved the April, February, and the December meetings, the second meeting, so she'll be working with the sewer department when they schedule their meetings. Will be in the last week of the month, because it's always the school vacations, always where our council, second council meeting of the month ends up. So, and a lot of us, some of us take off or whatever. So they moved that to the last week of the month.
And plus, we could always reschedule one by charter.
And we always cut back in the summer, usually in August, July and August, so usually down to one meeting anyway. Anybody have any questions?
I do, and I'm probably, well, I felt last summer, especially being, being a new councilman, when, when we met in, once in July, and then we met another four weeks later in August, and then another four weeks later in September, it's almost like we're cramming everything into one, one meeting, and the meeting is like three hours long. Would you guys have an appetite for meeting maybe one more time in the summer?
I would actually agree with the councilman. I feel the exact same way. Like, we put too much into those meetings. Those meetings went three hours long. I'd much, personally, I'd much rather meet twice a month throughout the summer versus the one time. I mean, maybe if those one months where we only met once?
The problem?
I, I was gonna say, one, two things. Vacations actually interfere, but also skip all that. We had a very busy July, August, and September because of other issues, specifically Town Manager getting ready to leave, finance issues, and whatever else it may be. So as time goes on, we can judge that, and we can call for a meeting anytime. So come June, July, if you feel that we need a second meeting, we can discuss that at that time. But right now, I would advise not to.
Dave, there are two meetings a month on the schedule between sewer commission and the Town Council, and you just cancel them.
We actually, yeah.
If we know it's a late schedule, we try and get before or after when it's not pertaining to licenses or holding businesses back. We always did that for the 12 years that me and Dave have been on. But I understand what you're saying, but...
It was just a very hectic summer, and we understand that. And trust me, I, we went through a lot, and we, but normally, it's not like that.
Okay, hope.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ward reports?
Five?
Just a couple of quick updates. Couple people, few people asked about the house on East Granitav. It looked like it had halted in terms of redevelopment at one point. But over the last few days, they've been back working on it. Windows are going in, insulation's going up on the outside, I assume the siding going up. So it was good to see that happening. We're waiting for those who are interested in the Crofton Meadows updates. There is a planning meeting on the 25th in Coventry. Whether or not that's going to actually be on the agenda, we have to wait and see.
Thank you. Four?
Two things. I think, I know we've mentioned this before, but Tumbletown Two, new, new business in town, right on the corner at Main Street.
Right near your fishing pier.
Yeah, right near the fishing pier. They're gonna be coming in pretty soon. It's great to have a new business in town. And I've also been working with the building official's office on a regular basis regarding the vacant properties that are in Ward Four, to see what we're gonna do with those, so that's it.
Thank you. Three?
Something I want to get on the agenda for next meeting, can we put on there Bike Path? I want, I know it's early now, but I want to look for next year to find a better maintenance plan for the bike path. I know, we get a lot of complaints about the way the bike path looks. I walk on it a lot compared to Coventry, and it doesn't look good. So whether it's hiring a landscaping crew, or I know Coventry has that, we talked about that, that, I don't know what it is that...
They have a tractor with a side arm that cuts down brush.
Something, one or the other, just to keep, keep up with it. We had some kids out there, but maybe they went out there once, you know, that's really not enough. We have a beautiful bike path, and it needs to be, you know, maintained. So put that on the agenda next time, please. That's all I got.
Two, we have Phoenix Tree Lighting, which is scheduled for Thanksgiving night already. Believe it or not, it's only a few weeks away, so hate to tell you that. Mark and I took a tour through Orchard Meadow, I think it's Orchard Meadows, off North Pleasant Street the other day. They're, they're actually plugging along. They got their first demo condo up. We took a walk through with a concerned resident up there, but they're looking, I met with the owner the other day, he stopped by, takes some pictures, and he's already, he's got, his first phase, phase one is 23 units. He's already got interest in the first four units on the right-hand side, which aren't even up yet, so, and possible deposit on two. So they're average of $350,000 condos up off North Pleasant Street, and so that's phase one, and phase two is a little larger. Mark, I know you've been very busy. I know you're finally getting back into your role. Just, I need an update on the Lippen Mill when you get a chance via email. And that's all I have. One?
Is Dave Lombardi or Freddie Gill here?
No.
Well, I have a few problems. One, I'd like to see what's going on with the cemeteries. It's disgraceful. When Kevin Raves was on here, he used to take care of them cemeteries. They were great. One, there's, most of them are on my ward.
They just came through mine and did a couple over there, so might be...
They could be falling behind.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a lore that you cannot go in the cemetery certain times of the year. They can only clean it in the fall and early spring.
Right.
So that's probably, they probably get back on the schedule.
Usually, we had a time, it wasn't done. That's one problem. The other problem is the Providence Street School, with the contractor for the water company, Brito. This has been an ongoing problem. Everybody knows, they got sick of hearing me about Wakefield Street. We stopped the job. The worst contractor, in my opinion, and the water company agrees, they could have built a highway from here to Germany before they finished a few streets. Now they're working in Warwick on East Avenue. The Providence Street School is a mess. That's the native design control district. I have the priests calling me, I have the parishioners calling me. This has been going on for over two years. It's a mess. It looks like a bomb hit it. Let them go to Warwick and make this mess. I want them out of my ward. So I don't know, Ernie, Mark, we send the building official down there, give them 30 days to get that stuff up. They're putting more and more sand, it stays all winter. They got, it's not even neat. It's, it's a disgrace. And we're asking people to clean their yards and siting them for a third of what these people are doing to this town. And I will not tolerate it in Ward One. It's not gonna happen no more. I've been biting my tongue, stalling the constituents, but enough's enough. They're working in Warwick now, West Warwick's done, I know Ward One, they wrapped up. Thank God. I think all they have to, not Brito, Carty has to do is put the top coats on a few roads. But as far as the water company goes, they gotta move that pile, them, them pipes. Ernie, it's a real mess. And we tolerated it enough. They've been patient, my constituents, the neighbors along there. They keep their yards up perfect, the churches keep their yards up, and that has to be stopped immediately.
Well, I certainly will look into it and see what can be done to rectify the problem.
Well, I know what we can do to rectify the problem.
Ernie, meet Angelo. Angelo, have you met?
What?
I'll stop at that. And I have another problem where, and it's nothing to do with my ward, it has to do with the town, where I receive some disturbing phone calls from people who put in, namely, the municipal judge, prosecutor, where they get calls from people who want to put their names in or already put their names in. I have two problems with that. How do they know who put their names in for both positions, and what right do certain individuals call and ask, who told you to put your name in? What connections do you have? There's no connections. This is a council appointment. I refuse to let someone intimidate people who are putting their names in for these crucial positions. And I don't know where they're finding out the information, but if it's coming from this town hall, there's gonna be hell to pay if I find out who's giving the information to certain individuals.
Angelo, Judge Bernero, when he resigned, when he retired, I know he reached out to a few people to let them know he retired. We also put on the agenda...
I understand that. I understand that.
So those positions are available.
I understand that. What right, you put in for the position, I put in for the position, I call you and ask you why you want it? Who told you to put your name in?
Oh, I don't know about that.
What's, what's that all about?
That, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, people are feeling a little intimidated.
Someone put their name in, we make the decision.
That's what, that's what I said, exactly.
That's plain and simple.
But I just don't like what's going on, and I won't tolerate it.
I guess the question, a question I have is, if you're applying for a job for the town of West Warwick, whether it's a clerk's position, or a four-hour, a week janitor, or, or a judge, you send your, your resume or application in, that should go to who? Human Resources?
Well, Human Resources, but this is, this is actually, these two positions are our picks, so they don't interview, they don't do anything, they just give us. So normally, and this is the first time... So normally, and this is the first time we've actually done this process, because John Bernero's been our judge nineteen years. Ever since I've been here, so that's going on twelve years and before that. Also, the last time we had a prosecuting officer was going back to two thousand six, so nothing's really changed yet. So normally, like, like this is council appointments, this has nothing to do with employment to the town. This, this is what you call, I want to say, political appointments. They're our choice.
So where does their, where does their application go though? Their, well, their resume, they send it into who?
To our office.
Well, we've.
To Mary Ann?
They came to our office and I did bring, one for each job and I did bring them up to HR. And they're not interviewing, but at the same time, I guess they advertised.
We asked, we asked last council meeting that they advertise, which we normally do not do.
Okay, so the resumes or applications get sent into you, if I want to apply for the judge, I'll send it into you?
We time, date and timestamp them and then I bring them up to HR. They'll go on, the, the only reason I brought them to HR was, that's what I was told to do. But they'll go on the agenda for you to make the decisions once everything's in.
Who told you?
HR said that they come up to there and she's gonna.
HR's not the boss.
Well, she's gonna advertise and then from there, however.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with her. You work for the council, Mary Ann.
Yeah, but Angelo, we asked.
You don't work for HR.
I, Angelo, but we asked the HR director to.
You take no orders from anyone up there.
Angelo, I, I'm not, I'm not discussing that, but like, I could tell you that we asked, last meeting, we asked Mark to ask the HR director to advertise. So.
I understand that.
If somebody's giving resumes or whatever, they shouldn't be sitting in a, on a file on a desk over here somewhere, they should be in a secure.
Well, they should be secured in the clerk's office.
Either, either way. But we did, we directed the town, the HR person to advertise.
Advertise. Period. Again.
Anything else?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
David, I want to bring up one more thing. I've been getting some complaints, some complaints from people up in the, the border street and Queen Street area saying that the, the water companies turned off their water without giving the residents notice. So what can we do about that?
That's something we need to contact Kent County Water on, they normally leave a note on the day before, but if they're not doing that.
Or a specific resident like had it happen more than once where they, they weren't given notice, you know.
The other problem we both have, because that orbits my ward too, when I have constituents on both streets, is they're going in their yards. The, the town owns thirty feet of road and five feet on each side sidewalks, they're forty feet total. They're going fifty feet in, digging up their properties and just leaving it like that. That's their property, they have no right to step on that property. So that's another problem we're having again with the contractor.
Well, I think, I think Ernie and Mark, you guys need to have a meeting with Kent County Water and find out what's going on with them. And just one quick update for the council. As of right now, we are gonna be down to two members on the pension board. Lou did send his resignation letter in to me and he's not attending any more meetings. Donna is not reapplying for her position and Mr. Coslin resigned, so we're down to two people and they're not gonna be able to meet. So we need to find some replacements or qualified people to be on that pension board.
Is that by ward?
No.
Townwide?
Qualified and go from there. So I have upcoming appointments, planning.
I'd like to say one, just one more thing.
Sure.
I'll make it quick. I'd like to thank Mark Corullo for stepping up really as interim town manager since May. I think, oh, well, anyway, I'd like to think, but I, I think Mark's, and Mark has done an excellent job in, in wearing many hats during this time and it's, it's been a, an awkward time for us. But he, he did a great job, he's, he's really, he's responded every day. He's exhausted, you know, half the time when I talk to him, it's like he laughs because there's so much on his plate. But, and I know Ernie right now is a welcome, welcome addition. And Mark said to me tonight, I'm just a planner now, so.
But he was so excited, he, he had to come be in the front row because he was, he was, it was.
But he's done an excellent job though, so thank you, Mark.
No, we did, and I, I got to meet.
I reiterate them comments.
I got to meet with Mark and Ernie last week and I thank Mark for everything he's done. Everything he's tolerated. He's done an honorable job while he was here, doing what he was doing. So, and like you said, he no longer has to give it a hundred and fifty percent, he can go back to a hundred percent. So hopefully.
Here he is now.
Mark, we're not gonna say it again, but you can listen to the tape. No, but we, Mark, what, Jay, councilman, councilman Jay Lichati and Jay Messier, myself and Angelo and John. Would like to thank you for everything you've done over the past six months. I noticed you were six shades less redder sitting up in the front row tonight than you normally are, so. And you and I have the same problem, we can't hide that redness.
Hey, at least, he feels like now we lift a dump truck off his shoulder. It's going on yours, Ernie.
What I want you to do is take a picture of Ernie now and then take a picture of Ernie next year at this table.
Yeah, Mark actually had a full head of hair in May. Yeah, that was last October, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright, upcoming appointments, planning board, alternate member, five-year term, technology committee, sewer use tax board review, West Warwick Housing Authority, one-term board of tenant affairs. One-term pension board. It says two, but there will be three with different terms to expire, juvenile hearing board.
One thing, Dave, on this, Mary Ann, is this sewer use tax board, is that the alternate that I requested?
No.
Well, don't, we need, how come the alternate hasn't been on here? Because we need, when there's.
Paula, can you add, I know you're in the crowd tonight, so can you have a time? No, we're gonna have an alternate.
Well, we're gonna, we are discussing, we want an alternate on that board also.
Alright, stop yelling from the crowd, we're just addressing you. So, last council meeting, Councilman Padula brought up that we, a few, actually, months ago, we talked about having an alternate on that board. Vibrate.
I hit the button, I don't know what's wrong with this phone.
So, we're gonna have an alternate, so if you can advertise that also three times, so we'll have to draw something up on that. Alright, with that being said, this is our first council meeting with no public comment at the end, so.
Motion to adjourn.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Seven forty now, seven fifty P M.
Beated by one minute. Actually, less than a minute, that was.